It is outside. You know, I. I really enjoyed the gymnastics and and part of it is is because our granddaughter was really into it, you know, so I kind of understand a little bit of it. But uh. Some some people are fast, man, they can run.
Simone Biles is amazing. Jumped twelve feet in the air. Last night she had a couple. Yeah, Al Hafal's, I never see her. I guess that she's human.
Yeah. She's not A I.
And that same sequence was about three.
Yeah.
They said they're wondering if that beam has got slippery, you know.
Or something.
Yeah.
I'd like to try that just one time.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. No witnesses, no cameras. We're talking about me on a balance beam, by the way, yeah, so. Should be a terrible idea.
Funny's in the paper.
Be a terrible, terrible idea.
We are being livestream guys.
I'm waiting for Brenda. She's gonna give you her. Here she comes.
The bell just rang.
Okay, very good. It's nine o'clock, uh, we're gonna call a meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners to order. If you'd please rise, I'll have, uh, Brenda lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, item two, if there's a need for a public, uh, comment, uh, we'll have that later on in the meeting. Um, you can either do it in person or with the telephone numbers listed at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And, uh, if you have a cell phone, if you could please silence it and if you, uh, need to take a call, we'd appreciate if you do it in the hallway. Thank you. Number three, is there any conflict of interest?
No.
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 Item four, we need a motion to approve the August sixth agenda, so moved. Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number five, in a motion to approve the July twenty third minutes. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Is there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay. Number six, need action to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash twenty for continued support for First District Association of Local Governments.
Mister Chair, I should probably recuse myself. I sit on the executive board on that. First district, I don't know if I have to.
You don't receive any compensation for it, so I don't think that that should be an issue.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen, is there any further discussion?
This is just a yearly, um, resolution to continue the support with them that we that we have done.
Did the, uh, fee go up on that at all?
Yes, and I'm not sure what the percent was, but it it increased slightly. I don't know if it was a three percent increment. I'll let you know.
It was a, it was just a very little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not much.
Right.
Yeah, Mister Chair, so the dollar amounts in the resolution for people to see. So forty eight thousand eight hundred seventy dollars and thirty six cents.
Thirty six cents, correct, yes, that is the amount, um, for the year to provide services.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number seven, we'll move down to our month reports, um. We can have Todd come up. Veteran service officers. Morning, Tom.
Punch the button, there you go.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Okay, for last month, um, currently we got a hundred and sixty five open working claims. Eighty two pending action from the VA and a hundred and forty five completed year to date. Right now, the VA is saying that it's on an average of about a hundred and sixty seven days to complete a claim from when it's submitted. Um, I would be happy if they could say that that would be the number. It's it seems like it's it's grinding. I mean, I know that they're busy, but, uh, yep, we're doing good there from that standpoint. Uh, Hamlin, I currently have thirteen open claims, four pending, nine completed year to date. Um, outside the county, eighteen veterans that we're working with and nineteen previous completed year to date. Um, for the month of this, let in July, we had an increase in monthly compensation of fourteen thousand seven hundred and ninety one dollars. Uh, year to date, monthly increase is eighty five thousand two hundred and sixty one dollars. Uh, in retro payments for the month of July, we had, uh, one hundred and forty four thousand eight hundred and seventy five. Uh, year to date in retro payments, we're at six hundred ninety one thousand three hundred and ninety two dollars. So, um, we had three veterans transported in July. Uh, five currently scheduled for August. We currently have seven drivers and one, uh, application recently submitted. We, uh, we're looking at some stuff in our office, so we ended up, um, so for a a veteran, some of them have what they call a K award. And that K award is entitled to a couple of different state benefits. So in the, uh, the VA sends out this, uh, summary of benefits every November timeframe, late October, early November. And on there, when they do that, they don't enclose the, uh, enclose, include the K award on it. So we got to see in some of that, so we went through everybody that, any veteran that we had in our our system that had a K award, we went and pulled a new summary of benefits. Because what it does, it gives them the disabled veterans license plate if they would want it, you know, from that standpoint. And also gives them a free park sticker, state park sticker. So we just sent that out. I suppose we must have sent out, oh, I don't know. Thirty, thirty five ish letters. So we'll try to keep a better tab on that from a standpoint that, you know, again, it, you could say that it, you know, it's kind of the responsibility of the veterans. But if we were able to identify that and kick that out to them. So we just did that here in, um, I think we did finish that up last week from that standpoint.
As a veteran, how do you know if you had K award or not?
Well, it'll state right on your, 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 um, when you when your claim was completed at one time, it will state that you are in a recipient of a K award. A K award is the loss of the use of a creative organ from that standpoint, so. Um, with that, uh, if they do, if if there's a veteran out there that does have question, they can always call the office again on that to see if we can confirm that. Um, we'll be meeting with the commanders tonight, um, at the VFW. Uh, nominees for Veteran of the Year are due at the end of August. I get them from the commanders of the different veterans organizations. Um, confirmed, uh, with community transit the other, uh, last week. I just wanted to make sure that they would still provide a ride to veterans for free in the immediate area slash city limits of Watertown to medical appointments. They will. Uh, they would ask that they call at least one day in advance to schedule that ride. Um, you've also heard me talk about the Veterans Transportation Services, BTS at the VA. Um, we were told last week that they, um, they do have the person hired, should be on board late August timeframe. So that'll be a benefit of transportation, uh, within this area also, uh, that the VA will be providing. Um, Jay and I went down to Hamlin County and, uh, went to the bridge dedication for PFC John Tuin. That was last week. That was very nice, nicely done. Well deserved from that standpoint of, of course. Uh, future, we have, um, I'm gonna, I wanna get down to Hamlin. I know they are having a meeting today, but I'll probably try to go to their second one, uh, commission meeting just to say hello and and, um, I didn't get that done in July, so I need to get that done.
How's that relationship working so far?
You know, I think it's it's pretty good. I ever since we made the initial contract and stuff like that, I have not heard anything really from them. From that standpoint, we're definitely helping out veterans there from from that standpoint, but.
I did hear from a veteran from Hamlin County and just sends greetings and says, thank you.
You bet.
And that's that's all you expect and that's good.
Yes, yeah, yeah, you know. Um, again, we, we, when we look at the, the veteran population and, uh, I was talking with one of the, uh, legislative reps and about the education of getting the veterans educated, it's it's huge. You can't ever do enough of it, it seems like, but, uh, the office will be closed on three through five September. We have the State Veterans Conference and Training. Um, we, the work study currently, they will, um, Julia will be there for the month of, or September, the the fall semester, and then she'll be graduating, so we have her for one more semester from that standpoint, but making a ton of progress there. We got all the DD two fourteens polled. Logged, uh, we're in the process of creating a roster.
Can you find another one to replace her?
I don't know, that's we, we do, and I I talked to her about that too, if there was anybody, and I might talk to, um, uh, I think it's Eric Schultz over here. He has kind of a VA or a a veterans group at L A T C.
Yeah.
If there's something that we could maybe work with that, so. Uh, any questions with me?
Mister Chair, just to, on the, on the K award, where does that, does that appear on the DD two fourteen at all, or just on the, on the disability adjudication paperwork?
It 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 is from the VA, it's not tied to military service. It's on the, uh, it's on a VA, from a VA compensation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a great day.
All right, thanks, Ted. Hey, Sarah.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Sarah.
Good morning. I don't have the monthly, no, I don't have the charts from the Helpline Center yet. They, it's too early in the month, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, yeah. So I just have some narrative report and, um, so I'll, I'll give you the graphs next month. Uh, I needed to come earlier this week because next week I'll be out, um, at for that reaching rural site visit in North Carolina. Um, this month so far, or for, I guess for July, um, Kerry billed four thousand dollars for administrative fees that were reimbursed for the impact or CHW. We were, um, have billed Medicaid for two thousand three hundred and three dollars in July, um, so those are, um, things we're able to gather, collect on. As far as our office itself, today, um, I have a Kathy DeYoung has, um, agreed to come on as my assistants for Collective Impact. She recently retired as a teacher and is looking for some part-time work. So it's kind of a perfect fit. She'll have great skills to bring to our office to help me with the community work piece of it. And for the systems of care strategic planning pieces, just wanted to give some quick updates. The interagency meeting is this Thursday at Fallout Shelter. Um, we're rotating that now. That was what the group wanted to do. And so this month will be at at a location in the community and that'll be Fallout Shelter. Our Advisory Council meeting is today at ten. I'll, I'll go lead that meeting. We're gonna hear from Sage Consulting has finished the needs assessment that we had contracted with them to do, and so they'll be reporting on that. Uh, and the other thing is that we're doing Cottington connects, we're doing a lot of advertising with that. And then with the action teams, I wanted to give a little bit report on that. And then I also wanted to just propose the idea if a commissioner wanted to be a member of those action teams, it may be helpful or informational, and so we would love to have you. I've kind of been representing from the county, but if there was a commissioner that wanted to be, you're always invited and welcome to do that. There's three action teams or three groups right now, kind of, we're regrouping the housing one. We did last week have an eight hour strategic planning with a consultant that was hired through the Watertown Development Company. So we had about fifteen, twenty people that were involved in that strategic planning process. It went really well. We identified four priority areas for housing. That's transitional housing, student housing, workforce housing, and affordable rentals. And so those are the areas that we're going to really look at and delve into for that. Um, the, the other action team then is a centralized location or centralized action team, and their focus is really looking at that centralized location. So as I mentioned in previous months, looking at a place where social service agencies can be more centrally located, so easier to access for community members. And then the third one is childcare, so I wanted to spend a minute talking about that. We talked about the different options last month. We are working on funding for the three centers in order to really address the needs that we have, plus the in-home providers or the daycare providers matter group, um. And with that, I have a consultant that I'm working with, another consultant that I'm working with for the collective impact piece. And he's really helping me dial into the data and look at that, make it really relatable. So I wanted to share some of the data that he's helped pull out of the information that we've had done. So, uh, in twenty twenty two, Cottington County reported a higher percentage of working mothers with children under the age of six and with children ages sixteen to seventeen than, uh, in other areas across the state. So Watertown does have a higher working mother population. For working families, Cottington County has eighty point eight percent of children under the age of six and eighty eight point two percent of school-aged children have working families, which means both parents are working outside of the home or a single parent. Children residing in working families, we have one thousand five hundred and fifty three children under the age of six and three thousand three hundred school-aged children ages six to thirteen who have working fam, live in working families in Cottington County. As you can see, we have a high number. Putting that against childcare supply, according to the twenty twenty three Kids Count data, there were nine hundred and sixty one regulated slots for children under age six and four hundred and ninety five regulated slots for children that are in school age programs. So that gap in supply and potential need is creates a childcare desert in our community. Based on those estimates, we need, uh, for children under the age of six, we need about sixty two point seven percent of the need of working parents. So it's almost a forty percent gap in need for what we have in the community. The supply of before and after school for school-aged children only means about thirteen percent of the need in our community. There's also, according to tax returns, there's ninety nine home-based childcare businesses in Cottington County. However, we have no idea what their capacity is or how much they provide because there's no way to regulate any of that. And so there is, that's where we need the home-based, um, component to, to learn more about that piece. So to meet the estimated need for slots for children under the age of six, based on that data, Cottington County needs to create or maintain almost six hundred additional slots over the next however many year period that we wanna appoint. And for the ages of six to thirteen, we need an additional twenty eight hundred slots over that time period as well, so. I, I, when he pulled it out like that and gave me that information, I was like, that's pretty remarkable to look at what our actual childcare needs are and the reality of the challenge that that presents to our community with that, so just wanted to share that.
The, the question I guess that I have is what can we do as a commission to, to help this? I mean, I, I know that there's a team that's working on funding
Mm-hmm.
this project, and we've been approached with the idea of also may maybe assisting with that, but where are we at with that process and?
We have feasible options in place that would solve the childcare issue. The barrier right now is funding those options. And so I guess if, if that's an option that the county has to help support that, it would go a long ways towards addressing the issues that we have with childcare in the community.
So what is the need?
The dollar amounts? Well, three options, the monastery, EduCare, which is Lake Area Tech, and then Roosevelt, if we were to do that. All grand total for all three projects, given everything, probably three million, four million dollars.
Big number.
It is a big number. It's a big problem. It's a big problem. I think if, if, um, every, I mean, everything will help, but if we really wanna solve this problem and and meet the needs of our children in our community and our families and our workforce, we have to look at what big solutions are. I still am hopeful that businesses will recognize that this is essential for their workforce and so that they'll come up. So I don't wanna say we only need, you know, that if, I mean, if the county can help with any of it, it will be a huge help. The numbers that are needed are big. I know the monastery is looking at some loan programs and some different ways to make that option happen. The challenge is childcare is really hard to make a go of it, and if you have much loan debt, you're not going to be able to make ends meet. And so adding debt to a program that isn't, um, that's more of a social service need than a profit maker adds some challenges. There, the model, if, if the mon, the money can be found, they can make, they can make it work. Um, but if we have to add debt to it, that's gonna create problems down the road. So. Yeah, I mean, I, I have charts with more specific numbers, but I don't really wanna be the one to give specific numbers for each of the projects at this point.
Well, thanks for sharing, cuz if, if people know that there's a need out there, we can all try and see what everyone can do.
Mm-hmm.
Cuz it affects everybody.
It, yes.
Well, and ultimately what'll happen is you'll have parents that choose not to work and stay home to raise the kids because it's cheaper than sending them to daycare. And Randy, you and I were talking, um, about some of the costs associated with monthly costs. What was that?
Yeah, it's kids that live around the country and these bigger cities on the coast are sixteen hundred dollars per child.
Per month.
Per month.
Yeah.
So I mean, that, that alone takes a pretty good job just to cover childcare, so, you know.
The models say that you should pay, like, you should figure about three percent of your income for childcare, and that's not the reality of a majority of people right now. People are paying as much in childcare as they do in house payments, and that's just not sustainable. It's not affordable.
Okay. Well, thanks for all your work.
I guess, thank you.
Well, well, visit about getting someone on that.
Okay. Perfect.
One of those action teams that, so we are more informed.
Yeah, that sounds great. That would be great.
Yep. Okay, um, let's move down to, uh, let's just skip down to number nine, we'll come back to eight. Uh, action to approve, uh, assistant agreement between Cottington County Community Service and Kathy DeYoung. We have that.
Yeah, and I, I mentioned, um, it, I think I mentioned last time that Angela Hyde had been the consultant working with me. Um, she was, she did not renew the contract at the beginning of July due to Romania in Sioux Falls more and having kind of a change in her areas of focus, and so Kathy and I have met and she is would like to assist with the work that I'm doing. This is also covered under the Beyond Idea Grant, so this contract will not take any funds out of the county budget. This is through that Beyond Idea Grant.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson to, uh, approve this agreement. Is there any further questions?
One which will be available.
No.
No.
Yeah.
That's even better.
Yes, it is. Yep.
Seeing no more further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Sarah. Hey, we'll back up, uh, I think Brad, are you here for your budget? Why don't you come on up for that, number eight?
Mister Chair.
Yeah.
Help for just one.
Yes.
Morning.
Morning, Brad.
How's it going today?
Good. How are you doing?
Not bad, a little cooler weather, which is kind of
We needed this.
We did, we did.
We weren't, the corn likes the hot weather.
Yeah, definitely shot up the last couple of weeks too, so. All right. We'll get started with the, uh, let's do the sheriff's budget here first.
All right.
Yep, so four eleven on wages there. We budgeted a four percent increase on cola. Um, we also included our step increases, overtime, part timers, transport, shift pay, call pay, holidays, um, snow days, included all that into that one there. Um, line four fifteen health insurance, we budgeted a ten percent increase. On line four twenty one, uh, sheriff insurance there, we increased it seven thousand dollars. Premiums came in this year, four thousand four hundred and fifty four dollars higher than what we had budgeted, so we're hoping that this seven thousand dollar increase should help cover this year and any increases for next year, so. Uh, line four twenty two, professional fees, we increased a thousand dollars. Lot more shipping of evidence, it seems like lately, uh, more toll calls and we're doing civil process, so we have to pay for that, we get reimbursed eventually, but increase of a thousand dollars there. Line four twenty five, repairs and maintenance, uh, increased that eight thousand and sixteen dollars. Uh, for zirker fees, they go up five percent each year, uh, connecting point for our fees there, data pilots, a lot of our software, leads online, Guardian, Hire Click, State N C I C, just to name a few of those. Um, plus vehicle repairs, they're getting a little more expensive each year. They jumped up thirteen percent twenty twenty two, seventeen percent twenty three. So, uh, the price of vehicle repairs and maintenance has gone up a little bit, so. Line four twenty eight utilities, I increased that four thousand seven hundred and fifty two dollars. Uh, that's for a monthly radio service that we're gonna look at doing next year. It'll be a cell phone service that attached to our radios as a backup type setup, so. Uh, line four twenty nine, uh, sheriff's dues and memberships, increase that four hundred dollars. We have a school resource officer now that's working with us, so that added a little bit of fees and then also with the price of everything is slowly going up too, so. Uh, line four thirty four machinery and equipment, increase that twenty four thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for two vehicles, the prices of vehicles have gone up over the years. Um, that's all the equipment and everything that goes with it, computers that'll go with the vehicle. Um, also planning for a couple of office computers. Uh, that's the contract with our GTAC for our body cameras and our car cameras. Uh, and the storage and everything with that. I always plan a couple of years or every year for a couple of tasers just to kind of keep that process up and going. Um, for some new munitions, uh, another drone, wide R. Um, and then, uh, looking at upgrading our targets out at our range, uh, for some turning targets for next year, so that some deputies have to react, so that's where the increase of twenty four thousand five hundred comes from, machinery and equipment there. Uh, line four thirty five there, furniture, equipment, uh, increase that fifteen hundred dollars for next year. I plan on replacing some office chairs and the fridge in the office, getting old and having issues with the ice machine. And then, uh, yeah. Yes, any questions on that? I didn't talk about line item, it stayed the same, definitely the same, so. Jail budget. That's on the next page here, talk about that one there. For jail budget, line four eleven wages, uh, we budgeted a four percent cola on that. Uh, we included step increases, overtime, part timers, transport, shift pay, holiday, snow days, everything that kind of goes along with, um, salary there. Health insurance, um, line four fifteen, we budgeted a ten percent increase. Line four twenty one there, jail insurance, we increased that one eleven thousand dollars, trying to keep up when we were behind again. Uh, was it this year, last year, we're trying to get caught up so we're at least in the, in the black there.
What, what does that cover?
That one, jail insurance, I think that's the one that covers the actual property, right? I think. Question there.
Yeah, that would be the property insurance.
On the jail, it'd probably be property and the risk management, everything that we'd be dealing with there.
Thank you.
The four twenty two jail professional services, increase of five percent, uh, our A C H. And, uh, that's for our, our medical and everything there. Added twenty four thousand dollars for medical record software. That's one thing that they've been recommending to us for several years is updating our medical records, so. That's a hefty fee to get into that software, so that's where that comes in. Four twenty two point one pharmacy, we increased it five thousand dollars, uh, it seems like that, well, we have twelve thousand in there right now. But we have twelve thousand in there right now, just going off memory. Uh, bumped that a little bit just because there's more uh inmates that are on meds. Uh. Four twenty-two point two counseling, we switched it from four twenty-two, put it on the proper line. Um, it's not a new fee, we just kind of switched it down to that one. Took it out because there was a line item for there and it wasn't in there before. Four twenty-two point three ambulance, uh, it was an increase of three thousand dollars that uh the the price of ambulance. It's gone up a little bit over a year, so trying to make sure that we're staying within that. Four twenty-five jail repairs and maintenance, increased eleven thousand eight hundred dollars, increased to keep up with inflation and repairs. And zirker software, jail cameras, connecting point. Uh, same type of stuff there. Uh, four twenty-six jail supplies, increase of ninety-five hundred dollars, cost of supplies are going up. Um, just trying to keep up with inflation there. Four twenty-six point two kitchen supplies and food consolidated correction, food service. Uh. Raised it five percent, sticking with the contract there. Uh, plus five thousand dollars for equipment repairs or replacement, looking at doing cabinets and doing some kitchen stuff. If we had to next year, so. Uh. Line four twenty-eight utilities, increase of twenty thousand dollars with the new boiler system that we're going to put in. The sheriff's office detention center ends up eating the heating and cooling for the courthouse and for the detention center. Uh, we're already paying for some of that right now, but we don't know what the. Expenses are gonna be, that we're gonna be paying for a little bit more for cooling part of it too and some of that, so we're trying to. Plan, we just threw an increase of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, let's say we don't know how much more that'll be, so. Yeah. Well, we got on that one. On our twenty-four seven budget. Only thing we changed on that is we did the four percent increase on wages. And a ten percent increase on health insurance. Otherwise, everything else stayed the same. And our youth at risk budget, we left that the same, still at five thousand dollars. No changes on that one. The youth at risk one is one if we end up having a house of juvenile out of county, mini haha or somewhere else, that's where that one is for.
Question.
Anybody got any further questions for? Brad? All right, looks, looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Oh. Okay, which uh. Still not seeing it.
In the.
But.
You.
Brenda, can you hear what you're saying?
Um. Sarah, what? It's uh Beth.
Watertown kids.
Yes, come on up for the um.
Just gonna review the budget Watertown Cares yearly, just so you know.
Where is that in our?
Happy, but I'll give you this and please this. Should be in with the nonprofits, but I was looking through, okay.
Thank you.
This is faster than searching.
Yeah, and at least we have the right one.
Yeah, at least we're on the right one.
Morning.
Do I need to?
Morning. No, it's already.
Okay.
Yep, good.
Good morning.
Morning.
My dog here. Yeah. Why don't you introduce yourself, so the people out there that aren't here know who we, who we're talking with.
Okay, my name is Beth Lalam. I'm the executive director of Watertown Cares. The nonprofit that oversees the six twelve flats, which is Watertown's new emergency housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Like you have a.
Oh. Yep.
It's a pretty. Simple budget.
Right. This is a first time, uh, before it was coming out of Sarah's budget, so rather than continuing to do that. Uh, they've made a formal budget request as a nonprofit, so this would be a new. Um, budget. Also, keep in mind the volunteer center has now dissolved, so that one is no longer uh requesting any funds.
So we haven't increased anything, we just have. Switched it around and it's organized in a different. Spot.
Correct, so it wouldn't be coming out of Sarah's budget any longer.
Right.
So the question I have is why is this a separate budget item and not a nonprofit request?
It is a nonprofit. It should be in with the nonprofits is where it would be.
Okay.
Yes, it's a nonprofit request, not in with Sarah's anymore.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so it's a new nonprofit request, so the volunteer center nonprofit came out, this one came in. Um, as a new one. If that makes any sense.
You know. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
We're just trying to make sure everybody knows what's happening.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we probably should, this is going to take just a bit. I don't know if you want to get Rick out of here. We need. Quite a few budgets that we need to go through just to touch base, so I don't know how you want to do that, if you want to get.
I just, let's do number ten. Um. Come on up, Rick. That action to authorize chair to sign the. Contract with the engineering service with Banner.
Good morning. Thank you. Yeah, this is just the construction part. For Banner Associates, the contract part to oversee all the grading, staking. Uh. Meeting with the contractor. Uh, but we're having a pre-construction meeting tomorrow. With uh, Clausens and Sons, so they can get started on this uh. Dirt project. But this is just basically the. Construction part of it. It's what the contract is for. And uh, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. On the back page, you all should have a. A graph, or I guess not a graph, but it breaks down what everything is for. The largest part is obs- site observation, and that's being there on site every day. So if the contractor has any issues or anything like that, staking. Just. Construction part of it, so. Any questions?
How s- how soon are we starting that?
They want to get started as soon as they can. So. After the pre-construction meeting tomorrow, we'll have a good idea if it'll be next week or the week after, so. So I know they wanted to get signs up. To uh, let the public know what's going on. So that way they can close the road. It'll still be open for the local residents, but. It'll be closed to the traveling public.
Hmm, so remind us again, this is on County Road.
This is on County Road twenty, which would be straight south of town. In between eighty-one and County Road eleven. There's a two mile stretch there.
Yep, okay.
On, it'd be one sixty or one seventy-sixth street, excuse me.
And how long do they anticipate it to take?
Couple of months, because it's got to be done. I, around the first or fifteenth of November, so they want to get going on it. Sooner they can get going, the sooner it'll get done, so. And it'll be gravel. When they're done. Until next year, then it'll be pavement.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question, so. Um, is it a, so it's not a change order, it's an amendment, so what, what's being amended exactly? Is it, it's, is there a difference in cost from what we were looking at before?
This is just the construction part. The other part was uh, design phase for the uh. Uh. Making the plans and everything for it.
Right, okay. All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen, um. To have this get signed. Is there any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Play the motion in a second, please.
Uh, motion by Gable, second by.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I have one little thing. It's a little PSA for today. County Road six, west of Waverly from the interstate. To County Road seven, it will be closed. There's a culvert that's collapsing under the road and we need to get it fixed before school starts. We should get it done today. There'll be a spot that'll be just uh gravel for a little while. When that gets packed out, settle out a little bit. We'll try and get it paved this, this fall yet. But uh, from four fifty-eight to four sixty-first Avenue. Will be closed. Today. It'll take a good part of the day to get it done. It's just the concrete culvert is collapsing underneath the road, so.
Can County Road six is from the interstate east.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, to right the the county road by the, right next to Waverly.
Yeah.
There's three miles in there, but. So you can. There's ways to get around. Using County Road, so. If you have any questions, give our office a call.
All right, thanks, Rick.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Now let's go through some of the other budget.
So start very beginning, we'll start with mandates.
Whoa, hang on.
Did you say Band-Aids?
Band-Aids, yeah.
Band-Aids?
Man.
Oh, mandates, oh, okay.
All these things that we have to pay. Don't have.
Yeah.
What is, Br- Brenda, what is that under? What should I search for on the? PDF version?
Mandates.
Mandates? Or what did you, Lee?
Mandate is what I searched for on the.
And.
Fund one oh one.
Yeah, so we did um, the election budget already. The next one is a judicial system, that's for us to take care of upstairs with the courts. That budget remained the same as last year, just kind of left that the same. Um, the collection agency, that's who we have contracted with to try to collect poor leans, um. Uh, court-appointed attorney fees, jail confinement, so re- left that amount the same as it was last year as well.
We had a pretty good return on that.
Yes.
It's been, uh, I know some people may ask. Why we're, why we do this, but actually the the return has been, we were getting nothing before.
Right, and so something else that my office is doing is before we turn it over to collections, we are now sending letters out to these individuals before collection. It's surprising how many of them don't realize they have a lien, and they've been taking care of them, so that's worked out well too. Uh, because as much as we can collect before we send it to um, collections, we get the full amount, otherwise they get a percentage. Court-appointed attorney, Lee, do you want to talk about that one?
Yeah, just, um, you know, we're trying to kind of balance, so you can see we had budgeted for twenty twenty-four was uh, six hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we're. Approaching that. Uh, on the good side, you know, clerk helped us out with some very expensive trials, so that's kind of our, that's our more or less insurance pool for catastrophic legal expenses, so when you have a big. A big trial like a murder trial, it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. So trying to balance, um. Uh, you know, it's very hard to predict, so we want to, probably need to increase the budget a little bit. Um, when everything shakes out with this last clerk claim, so we had a major claim, um, we might want to go back and look at that just before we approve the budget, we might have to. Amend this, but right now, um, this is kind of, you know, up it a little bit, but not, hopefully not have to go too far. Um, you know, because clerk is there to take, to help us with some of these expenses.
Looks to me like, like that little bit is two hundred thousand though.
Yeah, but I know, but the other thing is every year.
Bunch it out and divert this money to childcare. Yeah, we'd solve a lot of.
Yeah, it'd be nice, I would agree, but you know, it's one of our, you know, supporting the justice system is one of our.
This, this one is and it probably will be telling that I, so bear with me.
Commissioner Gable, Commissioner Gable, uh, what is the turnaround for pay, payback on that clerk?
On the court, well, you have to wait for the trial to get done, and then you, then you, then you pay for it. You pay for all the, you know, as the, as, and Brenda can probably speak to this a little bit better than I can. But you know, you you go through the whole trial process, you pay all the bills to the lawyers and, you know, different, different things. Um, and then you, you put together a gigantic claim and, you know, Brenda's office is quite familiar with how tedious they are. And uh, and you send it in, and then uh, we, the clerk um, committee meets. Oh, about four, three or four times a year and to adjudicate claims, and so. Um, once they adjudicate the claim, they they send, send the check pretty quick. So, so you could get caught in between years, you know, that, that would be a danger. Fortunately, this, this last claim got adjudicated. Um. Well, hopefully we'll have a better idea as we get closer, just before we approve the budget to see how it all shakes out. The other thing I want to point out about this is that um. Every year, those, the, so the state sets the rate that you pay um, court-appointed attorneys. And so this past year, it's been at a hundred fifteen dollars an hour. Um, so for, you know, lawyer fees, that's, that's cheap. I know that might surprise some, some of us, but that's, you know, that's kind of the way it is. Um, and so every year that goes up a little bit, so we're probably looking at about a hundred twenty dollars in, in twenty twenty-five. So we have to account for that as well.
So it was one oh seven last year, went up to one fifteen in January of this year.
Yeah, so, so that's, yeah, so twenty twenty-four, one fifteen, and then, you know, it's going to be a little bit more in twenty twenty-five, and I, I, I want to say it's a hundred twenty, but it's probably going to be in that area. I'm not sure that that's the exact number.
Probably. So these are all the documentation that we collected. This was for one of the claims that we sent in, this was for the other one. So it's, it takes quite a bit of work, but you said that everything has to be done and finished before you can start that process.
It's a, yeah.
Later.
Yeah, kudos to your office, those are not fun to put together, I'd imagine.
Shit.
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is abuse and um. Abusing child defense, left that the same amount. We haven't. Used that, but it's something that's there. If we would have that come up, that is something that is reimbursable, which like I told you last week, I sent in. Um, what we have spent on court-appointed attorneys from. June thirtieth of last year till July first of this year. Uh, catastrophic legal, that's for our. Um. Money for our clerk. To pay for that predatory animal, that amount took quite a jump this year. And the reason being is the number of sheep that we have in our county. So. Um, the game fisher parks, they. They're the ones who assesses this and puts these numbers together. So it's, it's according to the head of animals that you have in your county. So it jumped from, the actual was, you know. Well, it's fifty-five hundred this year, but it's going to go to twelve six next year, and that's the actual number. That's not an exclamation. Unemployment insurance. Uh, that's just, we left that the same. We've been okay yet on that, that that meets um, all those. Amounts that we put in for youth at risk. Left that the same, uh, Memorial Day. That's for. Supplies for Memorial Day that they. Will request. Uh, water flow production, another one that. We are, have to pay, left that amount the same, that's been covering that for the last few years, water conservation.
That's, is that the game fisher parks again, Brenda?
Um. No, I don't. I don't know off the top of my head, Lee, but I, I would imagine it is.
Okay, thanks.
Waterfall, I'd have to go back and look at their request when they requested that amount, but it's, it's a state agency. Water Conservation District, that is our flood monitoring stations that we have locations and twelve thousand's been covering, we're getting close, so hopefully. I just left that the same as well. Um. Domestic abuse, women's resource. That amount remained the same. Now, let's go to our nonprofits. Watertown Transit, they left their request the same as last year. Uh, Human Society left theirs the same as well, twenty thousand dollars. I cap did a slight increase, not too much. From twenty-seven twenty-four to twenty thousand eight thirty-four. That is for the community service worker that is in the office. In the main office. Uh, general domestic abuse, that is the Beacon Center, they left their request the same. And uh, Historic Conservation, that is the Heritage Museum, she left hers at eight thousand as well, same amount as the free, as last year. They send a lot of documentation, and then the Molet House, that one remained the same, sixty-five hundred. And they have all the supporting documentation, if you want to, want to go and look at that at a later time. And they have all the supporting documentation if you want to, want to go and look at that at a later time, it's all there. Uh, Boys and Girls Club did a slight increase from a hundred thousand last year to a hundred and four thousand this year.
By the way, that's where J D A I um money is too, so it's, that's been a very successful program.
Right. Tourism, facial lakes, lease is on that board. Their requests remain the same at seven hundred and fifty dollars also.
That's basically our dues to be a member of that is, you know, with mostly Memorial Park is our tourist attraction, in case people are wondering.
Uh, Duolological for the zoo, they left their request the same as last year.
Hold on a minute, I get caught up.
Okay.
My pages are sticking together on me.
Yeah, it can't even help you because these are two. They're not. But it's activity five twenty-nine. If you look over to the side, one oh one is the fund, then five twenty-nine.
I'm in the zoo.
Yeah, okay. Did you find it?
Literally. Oh, yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next one then is economic development. I sent and I re, they hadn't sent in a request. I'm assuming they'll do the sixty thousand again because that's what you guys agreed to. I will put it in as such. I haven't received anything back from them, but I'm just.
You're going to be getting that, it's wrapped.
We had a, we had a, well, three years.
Part of the capital campaign, I think it was five.
Five years.
Five years.
How far are we into that?
This will be the first year of sixty.
The first year?
Yeah, last year was forty-five, yeah. This will be the first year of the uh capital campaign. Okay, so I guess it's to the commissioner budget. Lee probably wants to do this. He put this together.
Yeah, let me, let me share my, a different uh, my Excel document, because it's a little easier to.
Your explanation, I kind of put it behind, not kind of, I did put it behind the commissioner and then the commissioner contingency budget. So it's like the fourth page is where we kill some of the explanations are.
Yeah, just, it makes it easier for me to explain, I guess. Uh, so it's the same thing, the thing that's on the screen, I guess, but you guys are looking at it in the book. Um, so, yeah, I think everything's the same. I guess the key things to point out is, you know, typically, I'm suggesting a, a one percent increase for our. Salary, um, and, but you know, we can talk about that. All the rest is kind of following suit. Um, Commissioner's Professional Services, that's line four twenty-two. Um, that's, you know, the increase in the, our HR consultant, just the annual increase. And then we're also looking at a wage study, a kind of updating our wage study and, and uh, you can see we just have just over ten thousand dollars. Kind of planned for that. Um, one thing that we can, I'm suggesting on line four twenty-six. Uh, we've talked about some, uh, an AV upgrade in the commissioner's chamber, maybe adding a flat-screen TV. Um, you know, that's if we kind of get around to it, um, to, so make it a little bit easier for us commissioners. Because right now it's behind us and we have to turn around and it's a little hard for the public to see because it's kind of far away. Um, so that, you know, just in the interest of transparency and making it easier. Um, and more effective for conducting the meetings. And then the other, uh, four twenty-nine is the other thing. You can see the list of the different things that we typically pay for. Um, in the course of a, course of a year, I guess, you know, you got the uh, South Dakota Association County Commissioners dues, NACO dues, our clerk stuff. Um, but I think, I, I think I can, Brenda, you said the clerk was a separate budget. I, I guess I was uh, including that here. So we could maybe um, take that out, uh, that ten thousand dollars out or whatever the clerk amount is. Um, from, because I, I, I had that included in here. And then the other thing that we're talking about is a, a time tracking system, so that's probably the, kind of the new thing. Um, IT services, that's something we have to, we have to pay for every year, so. Um, yeah, that's basically it.
Could I chime in?
Please.
Uh, okay, um, I don't, I, I would like to uh. Uh, neglect, uh, negate the flat, flat screens, that's eight thousand bucks. You know, I've got my back to it, but I always have a hard copy in front of me when we deal with this. And if those sitting in the gallery here uh have trouble seeing this, then they need to move to the front pew. Uh, I think. If, if we put two flat screens in here, we're gonna, this is gonna be a cluttered, is what, what it's gonna be. Uh, so I, I'm not in favor of that. Item, the other item is, is that, um, I go back many, many years. And at the end of the year, at the beginning of the year, we always hassle with our salary, our increase for the commissioners. And I, couple, three years ago already, I thought we had a, a. It's not written, but a verbal policy where we would not exceed. Where we would take the same increase as we gave our employees. And that way it keeps the, you guys are going to be along, around longer than I am and. But down the road, you're going to find, geez, you know, we should have been keeping up, you know, but. Do it now, keep up, keep aboard, and so that one percent, I would keep that uh flexible with what we decide to give our employees. That's my two cents. Any, any rebuttal, return fire.
I, I would say, yeah, I would say, you know, just, since we're concerned about, the reason I, I suggested the one percent is, you know, we're concerned about other areas of the budget growing. And just maybe a little way of doing our part um, to, to, to deal with that. And then also kind of the, the Commissioner's supplemental retirement line, four thirteen, um, that's maxed out. So if we were all to take advantage of supplemental retirement, that might be a way we could um, make up that difference if we want to individually. Um, so that's, that's what I would suggest. I mean, I'm, I'm open, that's what, this is for discussion, so I'm open to, to ideas. Um, on the audiovisual upgrade, I'm not talking about, um, uh, so if we did that, the screen that's behind. The commissioners now would go away. And the idea is just to simply make it easier for, you know, if we have people coming to present to us. I mean, uh, it, the, the cost is not, not huge, talking about five thousand dollars. Um, so, you know, I'm not hard and fast on that, and I realize that might be something that falls by the wayside. If we, if we want to, uh, you know, if we're really, if we're really scrimping. Um, so that's, that's what I would say. Um, that I, I do, then if, if we do have kind of, as we're just, because this is kind of a discussion thing, so. And in the interest of transparency, we need to discuss it, since it's the commissioner budget. Um, and I know Brenda needs to publish the provisional budget, so what's the best way to take care of this? I mean, if we, um, it's a little tricky since we're not really making motions and things on, on this part. Um, would it be better to do it when we actually deal with provisional budget and before we approve the budget, make those, those last uh motions to amend? Or uh, make some changes now or, I'm, you know, if anybody else has any, anything to, to add, please say, say so.
It's up to you. I would say leave that clerk in there, Lee. I'm going to double check that, but that part's okay. I mean, and that's something you could do, make a formal motion if we find out that it's two separate or one thing. Um, as far as, I don't know what you guys want to do, yeah, with your wage and salary, if that's something you want to throw a different number in there for now. Or leave it and amend it. It might be easier to take it away later than to add it on, you know, I guess that's up to you.
What, anybody else have any thoughts on it?
I would amend the motion to eliminate the. The, I, I don't know, I thought it was eight thousand dollars.
Five.
Five thou.
Five.
Okay, that item, and then to um, put the commissioner's salary. At the same uh, number that the uh, employees are recommending.
Four percent?
Yeah. That, I, I'll make that motion.
I would say.
I don't know, that, we don't really make motions right now. I think it's more just discussion. If you guys all would concur with that, that's something that we could go in and tweak it.
What, what are they sent, what's the feelings of the other commissioners?
In lieu of the budget increases being requested this year, I'm okay with one percent. I've always voted against a pay increase for us, so, I mean. I'm the anomaly, I think, on this body, so. I, I get your point, uh, Myron. Um, I think we don't want to fall behind, but I'm.
Looking out for you guys.
I know, I, and I get that, but um, that's where I'm at on that. As far as the AV upgrade, I guess, I don't have a problem with that, Commissioner Gable. I think that, um. You know, you're right, when people come to present and stuff, it's a little awkward. We kind of have a piecemeal system right now where. Um, where we try and make things work, um, the best that we can. I don't know what that would look like. Um, I know that they have a pretty nice system down in the courtroom. Uh, as far as being able to, you know, to zoom in and do, do those kinds of things, so. Um, I don't, I don't have an issue with that request.
Yeah, I think it's just a, a pretty minor upgrade, um, just to make it a little easier for the public and for us to see as we're. Doing the presentations, um, what about this? So since this is going to go into the provisional budget, I mean, we could, we could kind of compromise on the salary. Say, you know, add a percent if that makes people more comfortable. Um, keep in mind, this is not approving. We're not approving the budget right now, we're just reviewing it as we go through all these budget requests to include this one. And so when it becomes time to actually approve the budget in September, that's the time to make the final uh motions to amend. Final motion to amend the various things in the budget, so. Um, you know, would, would folks be fine with if I added a percent to the salary and then, and go with this up until budget approval?
I'm fine with that, two percent.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, so, okay. Thank you.
So you will send me the new, so basically it's two percent on the salary and then you're, and then are you leaving the five, five thousand in then for the?
It looks okay with that. I appreciate it if you could give it some consideration and then we can always uh, move to amend. Um, move to amend, you know, when we actually uh, approve the budget in September.
All right.
Hey, thanks, Commissioner Gable.
The other one is commissioner contingency then.
Uh, oh, did I put that up? I just, sorry. Hold on a second. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead and talk to it, Brenda, if you have it in front of you.
Right, um, yeah. Did something wonky. I got a call connecting point, it changed the current amount, so. Uh, it was two hundred and seventy-five thousand for this year and you're putting the same amount in for twenty twenty-five, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand on commissioner contingency. So that will remain the same as last year. Those numbers are weird. I don't know what happened. I can't tell you what they, what it did.
Yeah, oh, shifted them over. So that's what we, that, that two nineteen, seven twenty-seven, that's what's been expended.
Well, no, that's what's left. The expended amount is in that other line, which that's where um. Orner's vehicle, that amount should be in there and when I, yeah, I got a call connecting point. There's something that went wonky on it. But anyways, um, so it was two seventy-five last year. It is, you, you put in the same request this year for two seventy-five. Correct?
Yep.
Okay, and so we've done the auditors, we've done the treasures, um, state's attorney. That one, I, I've got it in there. Becky submitted it. Of course, she won't be able to review it. But um, there was, she did the same increases, the four percent for wage and salary, ten percent for dental and um. Health, other than that, you know, you can go through and look. She made some slight increases, but not a lot, so. Um, in the overall lines, most of it would have been in administrative personnel. Government buildings, we've done director of equalization, registered deeds, veterans, sheriff, jail. Coroner, I'm still waiting. We'll probably have that one next week. So here are four, we've done mental health. We need to do that one. So if you get to mental health. Everybody there? Okay, so the first one is Yankton, um, I left that the same amount. Uh, that's been covering what our charges are. Redfield left that one the same. That, that number pretty much stays the same, although this last month, I had one less individual that I paid for, so I'm not sure what, maybe somebody, whatever. Um, and then also, then the next one is the mental health center, which is a human service agency. And um, Harry figured a three percent increase in the different lines, so that's what you see there. It's a three percent increase. Believe that's all for that, and we've done the park, egg building, extension, weed, fridge, planning. Um, E nine one one, that would probably be our next one. I did a slight increase in that just because it is a, uh, I mean, it's a wash, it's a pass-through, so it's a guesstimate basically, but um. With the surcharge increasing to what, two dollars a line now, so I just did a slight increase in that, just to try to cover the guesstimate. Um, emergency management, I don't know if you want to look that over. Andrew submitted it, he's not. Back yet, but um, he did the same thing, four percent and then ten percent on. Uh, health and dental, and most of his other things are within reason, slight increases on his other lines. Uh, crime victim, that is Jan. Did the same thing with her budget, basically. It was mostly just the four percent increase on her wage. Um, and health and dental, so. Wick, that would be Angelica, same thing with her. Uh, we don't have to pay for any supplies or any of that sort of thing. We do. Uh, pay for her travel though, so I added that into her budget, but the same thing, four percent increase and everything else is just. The same, search and rescue, that's always fifty thousand, and it just depends on what they raise, so that's always just in there at that amount. Think we got it. Unless you guys have any questions.
Thanks, Brenda.
Well.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's a lot of, lot of numbers.
When I get the provision I'll put together, then you'll be able to see all the totals, so that will make it a little easier to review. Okay.
Okay, let's um, move down to uh. Number eleven, action to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one discharging. Jail confinement liens of deceased clients.
Right, and so this is the same, we did that a few uh, weeks ago on the poor relief. Now this is on jail confinement of individuals who are deceased, so just to get that off our books.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, number twelve, action to declare computer equipment. At the Director of Equalization Office surplus to be destroyed.
Yep, she has a monitor, an elite desk, a printer and a couple other, another NV, HP NV and a tower. Just some equipment that they have upgraded to and want to destroy this.
To approve.
Motion by Van Duzen.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any more? Questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Nothing for thirteen.
Number fourteen, action to approve claims.
So you have the claims of uh payroll for the salaries for the month of July. And that total is seven hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars and one penny.
Move to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number fifteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
I do have a couple. One is for the uh, community service for the ERA rental. Um, in the amount of one hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. That money will go back into her budget um, as a supplement for rental assistance. It's been taken out and it is. Um, received from the state.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And now the good news.
Item sixteen.
So this is in relation to our clerk reimbursement, that we submitted those two claims. The total amount that we are getting back is four hundred thirty-five thousand. Six hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Um, I will note though. I will do, we can do a budget supplement for the, the claims that have paid, been paid this year, anything this previous. We'll need to do a formal budget hearing, which I will set up to get the rest of it. we'll need to do a formal budget hearing, which I will set up to get the rest of it. So the amount that, oh, I have that in here, that we can, um, do a budget supplement today is one hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Move to approve.
Motion by Gable.
And then the remainder will go into next year's.
No, the remainder, I will do a formal budget hearing, and then we'll move it over, because it was previous year. Yep.
Second?
There was a second.
No, there wasn't.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, second by Johnson. Any other questions?
Yeah, we, we will need this, because our claims are over ninety thousand now in August already, so. Just to keep it whole, and then get the rest over, do the formal hearing, and then go from there. What were you gonna say, Lee? Sorry.
Well, sorry, Mr. Chair, sorry. Um, just a couple of things you were asking, people were asking about CLERP claims, and so some, you know, so the reason we have to do the budget hearing is for that portion that was not in this year. So it takes a long time, as the stuff, you know, goes through the whole process from, you know, flash to bang for the, for a trial like this. And then, um, how soon, my question to Brenda is, how soon can we do that formal hearing to get that, get that money, um, that, you know, applied?
Right, I need to advertise, which I will look into, since I haven't done this before, but I want to get this process going now. You know, within this month of August, I don't know if I have to advertise once or twice before we can hold it, but that will be happening. Hopefully, yeah, this week, yet.
Great, thank you.
Get that started, or get the advertising next week, but yes, I want to get that process. So I might just add, the one claim that we submitted, we didn't do, it, it's hard to know when you submit this, they don't always approve everything that we submit, which I will reach out to Chris, if she could give us an explanation of some of the charges that we didn't receive, um, compensation for. So the one claim, we submitted, it was fifty-five thousand, thirty-nine uh, dollars and thirteen cents. We ended up getting fifty-three thousand, eight eighty-one, twenty-eight, with a difference of one thousand, one fifty-seven, eighty-five, so that was pretty good. I mean, there wasn't too many things that, that we missed on that one. The other claim that we submitted, um, the amount of four eleven, six fifty-four, sixty, we received, uh, three eighty-one, seven ninety-three, twenty-nine for that one, with a difference of twenty-nine thousand, eight sixty-one, thirty-one. So I want to reach out to her, because if there's more documentation that we can prove, you know, maybe we can still receive a little more on that one, but I will find out that from Chris.
Yeah, and just, Mr. Chair, if I could just comment on that, just, just, don't, yeah, don't feel bad, these claims are extremely complicated, and so it, and it's pretty typical when you have a large claim like this, there's things that, that get either overlooked, or you, you know, you need a receipt for this kind of thing, but not for that kind of thing, and so, um, that's what, that's what some of that is. And it's just, it's just very tricky and tedious.
Right, yeah, we did send more documentation on the first one, but we didn't receive anything on the second one of needing additional documentation, so. We shall see.
Well, it's a good thing we have that, that really helps out.
Absolutely.
I see with these large, large claims that we got.
Right.
Wow. Um, is there any more, just, we, we still need to vote on, is there any more questions? So we're just gonna initially put a hundred fifty-nine thousand in, and then we have an hearing for
The remainder.
The remainder.
Yep.
Just so people know that.
We're not getting the whole amount right now. It's almost a hundred and sixty thousand, it's one fifty-nine, nine seventy-six, seventy-seven, so, yeah. That will help us, get us through one more month, and hopefully we'll have that budget hearing and get us a little further down the road, but I don't know if we'll make it to the end. So.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh, item sixteen, action to approve personnel changes.
We have one for Richard Kane. Did I say that right? Richard Kane, or is it Cone? Okay, I, I knew I was gonna say it wrong. Um, this is his annual step increase, he will go to step six, three thousand, eight forty-five, forty a month.
Move approved.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Uh, any other question? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
We have two travel requests.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
No, no, that's.
So the first one is for public health, um, individual to do school immunization clinic. And the other one is, uh, the Department of Equalization Office to attend a district meeting. You have all the other information on those request forms.
Move to approve.
Motion by Johnson.
Okay.
Second by Gable. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh, public notices, uh, where we could have a possible quorum. August sixth is the Na- National Night Out.
It's tonight.
Tonight.
That's tonight, Bramble Park Zoo. And then, uh, that meeting is August fourteenth for the Sioux Valley Commission Association, that's next.
Next Wednesday, here in Watertown, yep.
Any other? Anybody have any other possible times?
Well, I'm, I've got Hamlin County four H dug in tonight, and, and I know that there were people sewed up for the, the Cottin County, so I don't think anybody's gonna show up at Hamlin, but I'll be there.
Chair, if I can just comment on National Night Out, please come out and, uh, check that out, the FOP has, uh, purchased, um, gated mission to the zoo for everybody, so there won't be a charge, of course, to get into that, but, uh, the sheriff's office will be there. I think emergency, uh, or, uh, search and rescue will be there, the police department will be there, nine-one-one will be there, of course, and so come on out and support our first responders and, uh, and the folks that take care of our citizens, and, uh, show your support for them, but uh, that's also their way of, uh, showing support back to the public, uh, so, so come on out and have a good night, should be a good night outside.
Yes, great night at the zoo. Animals love it.
That goes from five until eight tonight, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Randusen. Okay, uh, number nineteen, is there any old business? Number twenty, is there any new business?
When does the, uh, the budget have to be published?
I will be getting that in, uh, the week after next. It has, it's required to be in ten days before we start our budget, before, it's gotta be in August, so it has to be in published ten days before we start our formal budget hearings, which will be every Tuesday in, uh, September, so they'll start the third. We won't have one on, the seventeenth will be gone, but third, tenth, and then twenty-fourth will be finalized, that's when we finalize the budget.
And I really encourage the, uh, constituents out there to take a look at that. I've been getting a lot of questions asked me on the street, um, primarily in reference to the, the jail. And, uh, uh, take a look at that budget. I encourage the people to do that, so there are no surprises.
Right.
Because it's a, it's a big one.
So they should look for it around, depending on how quick they get it in, that third or fourth week in August, they should start seeing it published in the papers.
I'd say, it's amazing, I think the number of years I've been in this seat, I've only had one, um, person that really, I don't think they actually initially fire, filed, uh, a complaint, but it was because we're spending too much money on drinking water. And, and that's the only one I've ever had, and so I encourage people to take a look at that budget, that's what it's published for.
Hey, oh, Commissioner Gable?
I was just saying, but disagreeing with Commissioner Johnson, that's why we got the public hearings, I mean, so people can come in and, uh, comment.
Yes, um, number twenty-one, now is time for our open, um. If there's anyone here that has any public comment, now is the time. I don't see anybody on the phones yet. Is there any commissioner comments?
I, I would just make one comment, I, I made a comment before about the, uh, uh, local Cottin County four H achievement days. Very, very good turnout, it was very successful. Steve and his crew, uh, with the facility out there, believe me, I had many, many people thank us for air conditioning. Uh, it was extremely hot last week, and, uh, and myself working out there, I appreciated it very much, and and so we appreciate the community support in that area, very, very good. Thank you.
I just wanna give a thumbs up for, thank you for all the businesses and individuals that supported the four H kids and their premium shows this year. Um, well attended, and it was nice to see the local people supporting them, and remember that when you go and make your purchases.
Yeah, the other thing that I had is that this past week, on Friday night, we had the, um, annual picnic for the First District. And we had a very, very good turnout there, good meal. And appreciate those coming from the surrounding counties that are all affiliated with First District, and it was fun to get together with them and rub shoulders, and you know what, they got the same problems as we do, it's the same problems, just uh, same church, different pew, that's all it is. And, uh, and so, it, it's good to find out that, uh, uh, these other counties are dealing with situations like we have, and how they're handling, and we always pick up some tidbits, some things that we could take a look at. So thank you surrounding counties.
Okay, uh, we do have a need for executive session with, uh, number one, personnel issues, and number three, contract negotiations.
Move to move in executive session.
Motion by Johnson, second by, uh, Waterman. Um, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries, we'll go into executive session.